I call this December 48th special call, City Council meeting for the City Council. We all, please move your hat and bow your head in preparation. I welcome you all to this wonderful day and this opportunity to further our goal and mission, building this city the right way and ask your guidance overall with all the citizens who met in the Capitol. Um, Madam President, you called.
Councilmember, here. Councilmember, here.
Here.
Councilmember, here.
Here. And we all say with the place.
My question is to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, we're all having a wonderful Christmas as I did and um, our staff has been working very hard on the end of our show, JD, Mary, Chris, Dan, whoever else is here, they've done some really good things when it comes to trying to save us some money and get things done, maybe get done, so I love vendors and whatnot, so we really appreciate that. Thank you for all the work you've been doing, what you continue to do. Um, does anybody have anything to say? I can deal with my hat. All right, minutes. We have received a couple of minutes of email over here. Is there a motion on the floor?
May I move to adopt approved the minutes from December 19th, 2012?
I'll second. Any discussion? Action item number five. Uh, motion carried. Do not amend it. You can amend it if necessary. Very imaginative, not a strong amendment.
Just plain one?
Yeah. Your second is the uniform. I don't know if it's your second one. Okay. Yeah, all right. All right, Madam President, do you want to amend the motion, please?
Yeah, um, ma'am, I made the motion to approve the minutes since 19th, 2012, uh, the laws and changes to the number of fire that go on the next time.
For a second? I'll second it. Any discussion? For the president? Have all approved, the City Council's opinion? Aye. I approve. Have worked with the Senate, the members of the House passed. No consent agenda at this time. Any announcements? Oh, sorry. I skipped something. Yeah, public comment. Does anybody have any comments, questions, concerns? Okay. Consent agenda, first amendment consent agenda, and are there any announcements? All right. Performance presentations. Our current staff, they're here on the roof of the Cat County Capitol.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Just to give you a square we are on this, we've got a number of different ones we're working on. Well, the first one is elections. We haven't started on any of that yet since that's not, that's probably the lowest priority. That'll be an IGA with the UCA County Elections Board to run our elections on next year. Second would be annual control. We've had discussions with the Chief Assistant County Attorney regarding that. We're not, we haven't determined whether or not there's going to be the need for an actual intergovernmental agreement or whether they will continue to provide the services without one, but there are discussions as to which way it's going to go, but it will be taken care of either way. The waste, the water and wastewater, we discussed that if we were to adopt a similar one to the one that Dunnwoodie did, what that means is that we will, they will continue to do water and wastewater services. Will be required to pass substantially parallel ordinances regarding all the, all the different ordinances that run with water and wastewater within the city. We'll deputize, we'll swear in their, their enforcement officers on that and those, and then they will be coming to municipal court for the purpose of dealing with violations of water or wastewater ordinances. Just historically, we did the same thing in Dunnwoodie and we have never had one, but if that is the purpose of it, to have the parallel ordinance. On the fire, we anticipate that we'll have the same fire IGA as the one that was signed with Dunnwoodie. We're talking to the county attorney as to whether or not that, that IGA will have to remain enforce in effect during the entire period of the next, of the service delivery strategy, if you agree with this down the place, or whether or not there's a, a way within the present service delivery strategy for the other cities and to the county for us not to have to have an intergovernmental agreement on that.
We all think you do have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Um, I want to say, of course, does that cover if there's broken up a thing like that as an intergovernmental agreement? If want to say we're responsible for making those repairs or how does that work?
If they are, if they are the ones who have to cut it up to get into it, they're responsible to put it back together. If one of their pipes blows up and ruins one of our streets, they're responsible to come to repair it.
And the other one, our John Street Building Code, is that in conflict in any way with the Cat County Code, with the state of laws?
What we've done, we're going to go ahead after, after this. Thank you, Ms. Garrett. After Marie. Uh, thank you. She didn't say anything to me at this point, she heard something, but I didn't bring it up to her. After Ms. Garrett, talk to the folks over at the county. We're just going to go ahead and re-adopt the county building code and for purposes of their, their ability to carry over the various kinds of activities that they may continue to do under an IGA, we anticipate we'll work out some agreement on the carryover of the various projects they're already on and with the help of the Public Works Department and, or the Development, or excuse me, make a determination of where the cutoffs are going to be and where we're going to, where we're going to be uptaken, where the county's going to leave off, but in order to ensure continuity of those that they, they are going to continue to work on, we're just going to bring to you the county, we're going to, we'll, we'll customize the county building codes and change the names and bring it to you in a parallel to their civil work. We'll just amend that before the end of the, the end of the moratorium.
Phil, I have a question. On, on both the water and sewer and fire, does it make any difference that on the tax bill, those are broken out as separate line items and, I don't know if they're separated in funds within the CAV administration? Does that, does that bear on what our cost is going to be for them? Does that help them determine the real cost of the service?
The, the cost of the services will be the buildings that they build separately to the citizens. There won't be any further costs, but the, the whole point of us being engaged and involved in it is that there's a conclusion of counties from having ordinances within cities. And when counties do the services within the cities, we pass a parallel set of ordinances and through an intergovernmental agreement or through the certain special service, or the service delivery strategy that's passed every 10 years, we enter into agreement with Smith and the other sovereign to provide the service. What we're going to, we'll do is we'll give them the authority to, to taxes. The taxes are parallel to what the taxes are now in the town district. They get to keep those tax districts and taxes and they live with the services and we give them a set of ordinance under which to live on. But we don't really have anything to do with it except for passing a parallel set of ordinances for them to work under and provide them court to conduct. Otherwise, it would be, it would be seamless. Nobody will have any different bill, no difference in services. This is the CAV County employees delivering the services just like they do delivering the unincorporated.
And the cost basically is what we're paying now?
The cost remains the same. In fact, in the IGA, it says that we would get the same services as unincorporated, same old better services that unincorporated. I don't think we'd get there.
Phil, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
When you negotiate an IGA, is it done on a yearly basis and a yearly?
If, you can have intergovernmental agreements that go for 50 years if you want them.
Two months.
Or two months.
But we're locked in the case of fire. That's, that's a service we might be taking over, so is it necessary to have to do it every year?
We're going to, we don't, but if, if we track the Dunnwoodie model, which I anticipate we will, is it, it's a 50-year IGA on one-year renewables, but unless you notify them, it's automatic renewal. If they don't notify you, if they notify you, it's the same, everybody has a renewal on it. You can do it that way. In, in Gwinnett County, for instance, they just had a new, after the lawsuit, they worked out the fire, fire, it's a, it's a 35-year agreement that, that, so that's locked in. So you can't, if you decide to go into fire, you're not, with the county, you're not going to get out in 35 years. Part of the reasoning behind that for fire services is they have really huge capital costs in fire service and there is a long capitalization period of any kind of equipment that they provide, so they're always looking to lock in a period of time to do it. Okay, I'm sorry. The next one after fire is police and 911 and municipal courts. We're working on a meeting next week, we hope to have with Mr. Stockner. I've already spoken to the Chief Assistant County Attorney on this, to, to work on the police, 911 and municipal court transfer. The 911 would be essentially the same thing as fire is right now, it'll be seamless, they'll just take the dollar and a half, continue to take the funds that are out, allocated by state law to pay for 911 services, they'll provide 911 service, 911 services with the city. We're working the finance. He's, Chris has been working on some numbers to, for the police, for our purposes, and going to speak with him on next week to see where we want to start from in terms of what our costs, their costs are in police services, so we're working to get into there. And then the other, the third thing is the municipal court transfer. We believe we may be able to do that even without even an intergovernmental agreement because of the timing on it. Since they'll be carrying services up to the 17th where they'll be booking in to the reporter's court or the magistrate's courts until that day, then we think that we can probably stage this up that when they, that they're, they're, when they start writing tickets, the bookings would be after the February 1st anticipated startup day for municipal court, so we wouldn't, we would just start booking people when they start writing on our ticket books, they would just book in after, until after 1st of February or start of day every day, so we don't have any carryover for having the other courts be doing any of the business for us.
When you say ticket books, does that mean they'll actually have a super good ticket book in their car?
No, the county will use their own ticket books, they'll just book us, they'll do the uniform traffic citations, but we would provide ticket books for, for instance, for code enforcement, a different kind of ticket. We'd also provide those for the, we'd provide a set of ticket books for wastewater and water. We would also provide ticket books to the, to the fire department, for the fire marshals, so that, those things would be.
Well, one thing about that, on the ticket, we actually will have the notice of the port they took on it with the address, but then we'll, we'll have to have some kind of the ticket book on it.
Will, please? Well, the, the police will probably, what we'll probably do is what we've done in the jurisdictions, give them a sticker, that's a, put a sticker of the town with the address on it. They're not going to leave one of that ticket books just for our jurisdiction.
So, so the IGA for the police, they're going to know the border of the city, they're going to know what this one is called and everything?
Well, the borders of the city right now are pretty well defined except for those few, no, they are, they're well defined anyway. There's not going to be much question. On one side of Claremont's going to be Ann Coop, right on the other side of Claremont's, it's us.
Is there any plan to kind of train the officers who will be paying the Cat County up because their zones don't necessarily match up with our, their traditional zone or match up with our boundaries?
Well, I, I think that, you know, the, pretty much, it's going to be fairly easy problem. They're going to know if we're on Beaufort Highway, if they're in Claremont or not, and that's pretty much our biggest one and everything up, backs up, everything else is up against shambly, so.
I mean, I can just foresee probably just my ticket on the traditional zone, which has Port David, I don't know, or anything, they'll show the Port David ordinance, jurisdiction issue.
Well, they're making it work to, and if they are, there's a provision that you transfer to, to, you can transfer to the other court. And you can always transfer to the state court of the CAV County because it doesn't have to be an ordinance violation. You can always be charged with a state charge except for our, you know, our local, province and taxes and our local, and our local, somebody and other kinds of ordinances for controlling those kinds of things, property man and all that.
Go back to the cost, man, our allocation and what we're expecting or what we're negotiating for as far as numbers and type of officers and how does that work with the IGA? Do we, do we have a specific number that we request or?
I can tell you, I can tell you what I believe they will do. I believe that they will go and they'll say, we have this many bees within Brookhaven, and it takes 5.27 or whatever it is, officers to run a bee, and so you're going to pay 5.27 for the bees, and then they're going to look, and then they're going to go look and they're going to pro-rata everything that's overhead that they spread across the entire county, and they're going to look at us to pay based on a population versus on the, on the service delivery. That's what I would anticipate they would do.
And can we increase versus the number of bees? If we don't live in a doubt of what, what we're providing?
Well, here's the problem, Mr. Ir. The, the problem is that the county's position will be that we are an integrated police force that, that goes for the entire county and we are not going to dedicate officers to Brookhaven. They took this exact position that way. And we will move officers where they are needed. If there is, if there is a monumental collapse on Beaufort Highway that requires 100 officers, we will pull them from all over the county. We're not going to be bound to the four or five officers who should be in Brookhaven, but they'll use that same argument that when they have other jurisdictions, where they have other places within the county that they need to up manpower for some situation, they will pull people off the beats here. The unfortunate consequence of living in a, a nice place like this is oftentimes other places have a, more severe need for police power, manpower, and when they have a, when they have a finite number of officers, they start pulling off the beats that have the least number of calls. And so you, we, I, we could be in a situation on a nightly basis if we were paying for five officers and having one.
Do we have, do we have opportunities to, to define response times and those types of things, or at least have some standard for response times and?
We can certainly, we can ask for those kinds of things, but the, I can, I can just, their unwavering position on all of this is going to be that I have to, we have one single body of a police force and that they are going to use that force for the best interest of every citizen in the county, and they're going to push, they're going to push resources to where they have to be, whenever they have to be there. And, and that's one of the reasons that you don't have forces here most of the time already is that they have, they have a finite number and they're pushing away, so I, I don't think it'll get any better. We can ask for those things, but I just think that's what we're going to be. I think our best position that we can take on this is, is to minimize costs. I don't think that that's, that's where we're going to get to. They're going to give us whatever coverage they can give us and not, I don't think that's going to take coverage away just to punish anybody, but they'll make decisions based on that. And so our, our target right now, I think, is really targeted at, at what is the cost going to be for a period of time and, and could you, we, the county will add it quickly and try to protect the citizens.
When the building was, uh, present, they paid for it about, oh, a lot of the services that were left, would be wrong. And we're creating something similar?
I'm, I'm withholding expectations.
You know, that's always some presence. You're welcome.
So, so in this case, there was not a direct relationship between that line item on the property tax bill that is now, since then, been broken out for ways? Like, like they're doing with water and sewer and fire?
No. Well, we, 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 I really don't want to get into talking negotiating strategy right now.
Well, I would think having that line item would, I mean, we're fine, what the cost is per capita.
You're certain.
Okay, good.
All right, continue. Anything else?
Parks and Rec, the county wants to put together some documents on that, I'll wait to hear what they have from that, but that, that's, that's the end of what I have for it for today.
Can you just clarify something on the, you mentioned the code compliance officer, and I know that we're in a more toward him on community development, so is it correct that there's, there's no enforcement currently going on of certain lines from the CAV County?
No, no, no.
In this month?
No.
Should we just add any?
Whatever code enforcement they have done on a regular basis, they are continuing to do. There, we, we've paid for code enforcement through the end of the year through our special service district taxes. After January the 1st, it's my belief that they will calculate between the 1st and the 17th, what they believe their costs to date for code enforcement, and they will be presenting, they will be presenting us with the bill, as well as whatever their costs are on roads or any of the other services. Community development, they probably shouldn't have the argument about parks and city things, because most all, community development's covered by, by a fee-based system for services, but you can, we can expect at some point in time to have a bill for code enforcement, we can expect to have a bill for, for, for public works and whatever else they determine that comes out of the special service district monies that they're, they're doing the services on.
So, in fact, there should be code enforcement going on. The report was made last week or this week, code enforcement should be handling it.
They should. And should, they're, at least they're in 17th.
I have a question for you. So, in essence, we have one or two more business days reported in the year of pay that portion. Most likely, these IGA's are not going to be executed within a period of time.
That's right.
So, we're going to be retroactively negotiating sort of their costs, or our, our, of the costs we're paying for these services first, maybe. What sort of, what sort of leverage should we have?
Well, first of all, we don't have to do any intergovernmental agreements because there is, there is an intergovernmental agreement by operation of law under our charter, which is our transition period. Now, the, the leverage that we have is, is one that really, is, is one that nobody really wants to operate under, neither the county nor ourselves, and that is to vote for and mitigate, other question, cost on. You know, I have a letter from the Chief Deputy County Attorney saying that they, that the county wants to work in good faith to resolve all of this, which is, I thought was a good letter we needed to get. And, and so I think that if, if we all work in good faith to come to a, a resolution that is fair and balanced in terms of costs and delivery of services, if we can sign off on it, we're all better served to, to get to that place than have to go to the fallback position of going in front of a group of 12 individuals and say, how much do we owe? So, that's, that's our, that's, that's the ultimate resolution. We, we always have services for the next two years.
Well, I, I certainly hope for the best because I think it would be very highly at Cat County leadership if we can work out something that, you know, quick and efficient resolution of these IGA's because we're still part of Cat County, we have a good partnership with them on that. But on the timeline standpoint, do, do you see, do you see any of these IGA's or city services that we tend to go a lot with on January 17th? Or are you going to, or are you proceeding along that timeline of being able to, one, have those contracts negotiated, one, second, and, two, amend the services, is my, actually, is for you?
First of all, let me scare, let's speak to that.
I, one other question, um, your role, um, the CEO put out a press release about a possible tax increase in which he mentioned that he had anticipated, put out a figure of about 2.5 million that the city of Brookhaven would be paying, CAV County, for interim services.
Three months, yes.
For what?
Three months, you want that?
Okay. Do we have any thoughts about that figure?
Not in the paper, I'd rather want to share.
I have this, I'll, I'll.
So, it's just something that they could have, wasn't it, in the toy on the table or in real, real talks? Okay.
Thank you, just sent to the council. Thank you, you deserve a number of someone today.
They're, they're sitting, traveling to Nebraska.
All right. Things like library services and those, I'm trying to back on the, are, do those do, do we do an intergovernmental with those or they just provide that, kind of thing like that, or go in courts and those types of things?
Uh, the courts and jails are all, all paid for. I have to get back with you on the library services.
I can talk to whoever, libraries, libraries.
Please.
The libraries are located within the city limits. You have the option of buying those properties, 5,000 dollars off of the building plus $100 break, or you can choose to do so, then at that point, you're entering an IGA for the continued provided services, or you can choose to simply allow it to continue only operating.
Well, on the science, you know, right now, in the, the library bond, there's 3.2 million for a quote new Brookhaven library. Can we acquire those funds and the library, or do we have today's, today's, and today's , I mean, no, I mean, it's specifically dollars apart with Joe. It is specific.
That, that is beyond our impossible, so. I'll be, I'll be, probably very similar situation to Parkland. We can say our position and they'll say our position.
This one's a little clearer, though. This one was actually spelled out.
But then, you know, they're, they're already, they don't step out.
I'll go back. There. We'll look at that for you.
Okay, but there is money allocated specifically from that bond, around 100 or 300, 3.2 million.
And I have one other question, back on elections. It was my understanding that the county had a runoff election that was only in Brookhaven, that was going to be, I think, about a $40,000 cost incurred by the city, but it's not part of the amount covered under the general election during the presidential.
That's what I understand, yeah.
So, you have a non-election. So you haven't gone near elections, so we don't, we haven't seen that bill or we don't think it's going to down the road.
Isn't that two years, two years that you pay?
Oh, that's a generous term.
But that's why I wrote a paper.
I can, I can tell you that DeKalb County is much better in terms of their board of registrations and elections than full in terms of their costing for the city's primary elections. I would assume that you all are going to want us to work with board of elections and registrations to work out an agreement for the primary elections and probably work out a payment on the other two, two counties.
I think Vegas has a question. Well, if you want, just here, if you want to re-stand when you give your status.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Chris Pike, you're up.
Mayor Council. Just looked over the proposals that we received for banking services. Just wanted to provide enough, and you have spent some communication online and answered a lot of questions plenty, but we have a little bit of proposals. There's definitely a greater advantage on the Jacob Morgan Chase proposal about some of the highlights and I believe in the package you should have, or if you may submit your call proposal. And really just wanted to take this opportunity to answer any specific questions you may still have on that. Oh, we are, we're seeing, working with them. Everything else is up ready, so we can start putting some money tonight.
All right.
Could, could you just go ahead and tell us what the terms are so the public can also understand?
Sure. Actually, Jacob Morgan Chase has agreed to provide us free services in terms of our RFP.
Which is?
I think it was three years, Chad, was it three years? I believe it was three. I can tell you Chad on that. It was, it was three or five.
It's three with two one-year extensions.
There you go, three and five. That's why, this is Chad from Jacob Morgan Chase. He wanted to hear that other question. But they have agreed to provide this over three. There may be other things that we will need, obviously, that might not be free down the road. The TAN, for example, that was part of this RFP process, they're not going to give us an interest free loan, but they will make sure that the rates are competitive and prepared to other options that will have, will have, make sure that they are, they are, they're, in short, they're wanting to close on their resume and want them to play in the Atlanta market and they see Brookhaven as a good partner to work with them and start increasing their governmental exposure in Atlanta.
So not being a banker, let me just make sure I understand. Their, we'll ultimately have as much as twenty, twenty-five million in revenue that we would be running through Chase, so this is why it's attractive to them, just to have our money in their bank.
Having deposits on hand is one of the ways that they manage their market share. That's definitely one of those.
What are the odds of we get an ATM at the municipal hall?
I thought there was, isn't there, I was reading somewhere that there is an ATM either at that spot or nearby.
There's one in Brooklyn.
Yep. I don't think anyone used that. I thought I read.
That maybe it's a general servant, is it just a, like, do they have a cafeteria or a? It might be just, it's something, have an ATM or outside or right near or across the street.
I, I thought I read somewhere that the property had something already. And if that's not the case, we'll, we'll start talking about that.
I don't remember, but there is a courtyard there, a cafe, there is a central service area and, and this court building is in the middle of the complex, so if they have one, it would be convenient. If they don't, maybe they would allow.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look into that. Either it's not there or within our drawers, I'm sure it might be a place. Another criteria, you have to be good at some word, you got to look at what the market.
And so Chris, you looked at prospective services from, from the banks several banks?
The RFP had two responses. So our, our choices there are limited other than the fact that we had the right from Jacob Morgan Chase. When the RFP was audited, I did the fact that it included the TAN in addressing that would probably deter some banks from proposing on it. I know all of the major governmental folks in that area, or Bank of America, et cetera, et cetera. And I did talk to a couple of them and, you know, one in particular said that the fact that the TAN was in there, they weren't going to get on this side. But all that being said, I had a vision of what I wanted to see in a good proposal and we did have a proposal set up and provided exactly what I was looking for. So I hope to see a need to throw out proposals and start a process over. This is a good proposal, it's a very good reputable bank and I see, I see no reason to proceed with it.
And why would a TAN be a negative? Was it too big of an amount or?
It's not so much the amount, as much as it is the legal process of going through with the approvals and that. I know Chase did a lot of work even before the RFP was released to start finding a partner to release a TAN. They, they wanted to make a move on Brookhaven and they worked progressively to do so and they started a lot of work ahead of time. So once the RFP was released, you know, a lot of their legwork was already done.
Good for them. So the traditional banks like SunTrust have done this in the past.
So I pressed the one that I spoke with specifically, Coffee Fair's relationship manager, I would have had reservations going with them if they had hidden one of the proposals as well, but he, he was the one that said the TAN aspect was why SunTrust decided not to get on. And I know for a fact on Willow's Park, as I've talked, related to Sally, Sally Kerr, they, they told me point blank, they're not going to give anybody free service ever. They can city Atlanta for many dollars a year and they just, they charge for what they do and they're not going to provide free service. I'm a little bit more hard-nosed and I see the value of having a turn on someone's resume and I, in return, I'd say a little bit of free service comes with that.
Thank you. Good job, Chris. So you're comfortable building forward if there's no gutters in there and we move forward and begin building up additional services, additional funds?
Oh, that's the last, I think this is the next one, Chase. Even, even other ones, too, you start with one. This one in particular is a good choice and I think if we had TAN issues, we still probably could look into the same question.
And we can move to someone else at any time?
Absolutely.
Well, so to that point, so a three-year term is, it does allow for a change before the three, end of three-year term?
Yeah, there's, just about any contract we enter into is going to have termination conditions. You know, either for cost or without cost, we're going to be able to get out. I will say it's, you know, it's a pain to switch banks, but you know, it.
I mean, it is, they know that, that's why I'm going to, I've got a better deal with government.
Yeah, but the back ends they had, they, they won, so they worked really hard even before these are resubmitted, just start down this road. And I was expecting a good proposal from them.
Does that include multiple accounts, like will the court have its own bank account?
The court will have their bank account, we'll have a disbursement account and then we'll have a concentration account that everybody funnels up into and then adds additional funds or add it down this road if we have additional accounts.
Chris, do you want to chat something about this or actually anything he's heard of us on the surge or?
Chad, want to tell us? Yeah, I actually manage the Georgia region, the Central and Southeast, but we've entered this in good faith. You know, this is a great opportunity for us, for expanding this market, you know, growing rapidly and this particular space is important to the government space. It is very important to move your business from another bank, so this is a great opportunity for us to start with something fresh and build it the right way. There are no gutters in there, you know, we did this in good faith, you know, our intent is to truly offer for free for the full three years with one-year extensions, except for the full five years of the contract while taking the services. And as we look at additional services over time, if there's things that you want to add, you know, we were negotiating this one-off, we're very competitive and we're certainly not losing money and there's, you know, value to the balances, there's value to us in the brand, so maybe.
It's not too good to be true.
It's, it's not too good.
Chad, what did you want to say?
Preska?
And let's get enough of the search two chats. One other thing I found interesting for their credit, they reached out to me, that's all I'm doing there on this. I think they said, you know, we understand you're, you're by Brookhaven, what do you think is there to get their services? And they had their folks from Orlando and sat down for about two, three hours one afternoon and we just kind of walked through the whole incorporation process and some of the short-term needs that are there, long-term needs that are there. They, they were.
Are you providing banking services for other municipalities?
We are. It's a very large, we have three names.
I mean, what, in the metro area?
We are.
No questions?
Yeah, we have a question.
Could you anticipate from the city's finances and finances that we would have larger balances that, that create interest-bearing account?
Well, the nice thing about not having to pay service charges is we can move our money to interest-bearing accounts. Now, right now, the rates aren't great by anybody's standards, it's less than a tenth of one percent. But I expect with some financial discipline that over a period of, you know, four to five years, we'll build other healthy reserves like the other cities that do. And there are other options besides checking accounts when it comes to putting your investments and earning a little bit more. I would say in 2012 was the first year we started investing. Until that point, everything was in our checking accounts, just managed cash flow. So it's going to take a couple of years to get there, but we have a lot of options.
And I, I think also if we can resolve some of those bond issue things, we have countless of them later that could, could help with structures and treasury services that we're going to issue and save.
Absolutely.
I'm glad Jacob Morgan has next piece in this treasury service structure in particular regard their, their commercial side services investment. So that's it.
Who's next? Marie.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you. Mayor Council, I have some materials for you, they're in your packet and also language tables, a folded map. These materials represent data that we've been collecting for you. One in particular, the large map that's folded, this has, has here, has different dots on it, represents the business licenses that the city has received either in application form and the status of them. Business licenses thus far for Brookhaven include two thousand ninety-seven licenses and there are one hundred and twenty-one liquor licenses. Now again, some of those are pending review, others have been issued, others have just been submitted and they're not getting the reviews in. Another point that I'd like to make just as a footnote, some of these business licenses are multiple. One of the points that were noted is Costco has ten different licenses and we think that that has to deal with the handling of the beer, the wine and the liquor and that may be just different distributors that hold different licenses on behalf of Costco. I'm just assuming that, I don't have that as fact, but that could be one explanation for that. The other thing is this material, this data is very rough from the county, so this is going to be one of the first handoffs to the new community development department to go through and confirm for us. Additionally, you have a smaller map, about eight and a half by eleven, that's in your packet that has some yellow dots on it. And that indicates the number of land disturbance permits that are in an active stage and it locates where they are, the backup material, and in your packet, let me just walk you through this, you're going to see this very small mice type that coincides with your business license and liquor license map.
Definitely present in there for me as far as.
Yes, business licenses, two thousand ninety-seven, liquor licenses, one hundred and twenty-one. And again, with a footnote that they still need to be filtered, this was brought, they were given to us by the county and some of the businesses are showing multiple licenses and it may be because they have different businesses under the same roof, operating under umbrella names such as Costco. Land disturbance permits, thirteen, and that's on the smaller map. But again, just so you're, you know what date you're looking at, behind the map of the yellow dots, the, the smaller map, the eight and a half by eleven, the pages that look like mice type, that's for the larger map. That's for the business licenses and the liquor licenses. Behind that are the information sheets regarding and tied to the land disturbance permits. It gives you the address, it gives you the applicant's name and it gives you a status and it, it gives you, gives you the staff notes as to what they're reviewing, some of which may have failed or they're asking for revisions. So that gives you a, a status of, of the number of permits. The building permits, I met this week with the county and they were confident of their own numbers. I can tell you, they probably had close to thirty sheets of legal sized paper in mice type forms of building permits. And that was anywhere from a bump out of a kitchen to expand a kitchen to a full-fledged building for a house or a commercial building or anything. So they're going to, they're going back through those numbers for me and they should have those available to me next week, so we'll follow back up if you all see you get that data just so you can see what's going on in the city.
Is that information electronically stored or is this all on?
Well, they, they pulled it from their different software and when I was meeting with Public Works and Planning together, when Planning gave me the material, Public Works questioned the validity of it. So they're going back through it to check it. I'm hoping to receive it electronically and when I do, then I can pass that on. But I do want to try and plot that on maps. That'll be a, a big help to not only the community development department, but also to you all so you can see what's going on in your respective districts.